And now we'll have Ms. Craigin lead us in a salute to the flag. Ms. Craigin. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Did that go out to everybody? No? Okay, school committee members and student reports. School committee chair report. I have a lot to report, but not, not, not this evening. Resource committee. Mr. Stevens. We can't hear him.
Let me.
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Okay. No report at this time for resource or school. We had to cancel our meetings.
All right, Mr. Stevens, school building needs?
Yeah, I had to cancel our meeting.
Okay. Policy committee, Mr. Horgan.
Our last meeting was scheduled for the day of the state of emergency. So we have yet to reschedule and we're hoping to schedule a Zoom meeting sometime soon.
Good, thank you. Student support, Ms. Lepel Pierce, is she on yet? No?
No, she's not.
School personnel committee. Nothing to report at this time. Executive committee, nothing as well. And Ms. Scarpalotti, if you will give us the student report, please.
Up until today, we've had this time to make up any quarter three assignments and above requesting the extra credit where we needed it.
Can you hang on for a second? Can you hang on? That's all broken up.
Started today, FS will begin shifting from recommended work to expected work. On this. Is it better now?
Well, I think FATV is asking you to your report over again. The sound was a problem with the sound.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Up until today, we have had this time to make up any quarter three assignments as well as requesting the extra work we needed. For quarter four, which began today, FS will be shifting from recommended work to expected material and assignments. The teachers are collaborating to create Google Hangout sessions for review support and connection. I've already received daily assignments from each of my classes this morning. It's generally consisted of a forty-five minute video that we have to take notes on and then take a picture of the notes and then submit it on Google Classroom as well as an additional set of questions that we have to submit by the end of the week. April vacation is still happening and will begin April eighteen and run through April twenty-six.
Kayden.
During this extended time.
Kayden, can you? Yeah, FATV is asking you to call in. Call the number that's provided. The sound is, there's a problem with the sound.
There will be course.
Okay. Are we going to continue? Everyone still with us? Hello?
Yep, I am.
Okay, all right.
Still here.
Approval of the previous school committee of March 2nd, 2020. Motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion made.
Second.
And second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed is unanimous, thank you. No need for executive session. Communications, anyone wishing to avail themselves of this agenda item? Seeing none? Did we get any public comments submitted? Does anyone have that? Bob, maybe you do?
I didn't receive any from our question email.
And then Ms. Lepel Pierce has joined us. Jeannie, hi, good to see you.
Yeah, good to see you, Mayor. I don't have any communications.
Okay. Superintendent's report. Bob?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to thank the community, the parents, the children and teachers for showing resilience over the last few weeks. Clearly, this was a situation that happened very quickly for everybody. And we want to acknowledge that it's been, you know, difficult and has put a lot of stress on our normal routines. I also want to thank our staff from food service to custodians, clerical and our teaching staff who have adapted during this time period and tried to shift learning modalities from in-school to remote learning. And we recognize this has been a large transition for our staff. And we, like school districts across the country, are, we're all building the plane while flying it. So I just want to open up with a note of acknowledgement and thanks with what's happened and before I get started here on tonight's presentation. So tonight, we have one long presentation and we'll have different speakers, myself starting off, then followed by Dave Semenza giving an update on the nutrition services and the food distribution. We also received or completed a survey, try to get community input in terms of what the needs are. Adam Renda will go over that. Assistant Superintendent John Thompson will talk about the remote learning initiatives that we've kicked off. And Mr. Shalfo will talk about the budget situation so far. There's still a lot of unknowns in regards to what's happening at the state level. Clearly, the COVID-19 crisis is impacting the state and we're waiting to find out about Food and Opportunity Act funding for next year. Mr. Shalfo will also give an update on the two MSBA projects. And lastly, Pittsburgh High Principal Roach will talk about the Mass Skills Grant and our career readiness initiatives. So having said that as an introduction, you know, just recently, where have we come from? Where are we now? Back on March 13th, we announced a school closure from March 16th through 20th. That was a Friday afternoon where many school districts, including Pittsburgh, had to independently make a decision to close based on increasing information about COVID-19. On that weekend, March 15th, Sunday night, Commissioner Riley and Governor Baker announced a statewide closure of all schools from March 17th with a possible reopening date of April 7th. On March 25, 10 days later, Governor Baker announced that given the spread of the virus and efforts to try to contain the spread, that the earliest possible reopening would be for May 4th, 2020. That date now coincides with also the essential businesses that he has recommended to be closed. So the next phase really was kind of phase one in terms of how we initially responded. And that time period was from March 15th through April 3rd. So some of the highlights were, number one, we first want to make sure our students were receiving meals. We didn't want there to be any interruption. And with the past experience in terms of emergencies, Sedexo once again stepped up to the plate. We started with a pickup model, a grab and go model at our schools. And we also added seven distribution sites where our big yellow bus vendor would distribute meals throughout the city. And we recently added additional distribution sites, which Mr. Semenza will go over in a little bit more detail. We began our educational enrichment by distributing enrichment bags and students in grades K through eight during the first week of the grab and go at our schools. And that material was, at that time, was nonevaluated. Our primary goal over the last few weeks has been to connect with our students, check in on them, see how they're doing, see what their needs are. As I mentioned earlier, surely Adam Renda will discuss the results of the community survey, which was conducted. That survey, we had over sixteen hundred responses. I think that's one of the largest surveys, survey responses that the district has ever had. We also got our e-learning suite added to our website categorized by grade level. We've been adding information to that site since we closed school back on Monday, March 15th. We've also begun the distribution of digital devices, primarily Chromebooks, which we had in stock. And lastly, we reached an agreement with teachers on professional expectations and student expectations for the time period beginning today, Monday, April 6th through May 4, our earliest anticipated return date. So looking at April 6th through May 4, as I'll call it, phase two, enrichment assignments now count for educator feedback. So the work is no longer optional for our students. We're continuing to distribute Chromebooks. I think Wednesday is our last day of distribution. And lastly, we are investigating Wi-Fi access point options. That was the number one identified need from our community survey. So again, as my public service announcement portion here is continue the physical distancing of six feet. It's very important to try to slow or stop the spread of the COVID-19 virus. Wash your hands with soap and hot water, practice good hygiene. And again, establish and continue a routine. I know the high school has put up a physical fitness routine. I think it was Batman routine that showed some sample exercises. I've tried some of those exercises, it works. So having said that, I'll turn it over now to Dave Semenza for an update on the meals.
Thank you, Bob. So the, we do have a presentation, is it part of this one? Or should I get access? I have it available on my own screen here.
I believe it's a separate presentation and I think John will be loading it up on his screen.
While John does that, I just wanted to take a quick moment. What we've, what we've been able to do in the last weeks, I wanted to first thank Superintendent Jokola and his administration team. Their leadership throughout this has been exemplary. You know, answered every questions that we've had in the food service and just overall guidance has been great. The principals have assisted us in the service portion as much as they, they, they can. They've been very helpful. A couple of specific folks I wanted to thank, Donna Hildrift, the transportation coordinator, and Jackie and all the folks over at First Student. They've been providing busing and meal service, which we're going to talk about in a second. They've been wonderful partners for this. Chad Gardner, Communications Director, him and I are constantly updating and making sure the public knows where to get meals. Tom Peterson and his maintenance and custodial staff have been very helpful as well, making sure our teams in the kitchens can get in and out and, and get those meals prepared. So, and lastly, and most importantly, is the entire nutrition services team. The nutrition service workers have really stepped up to the plate and are coming in every day. Going to talk about the safety measures we're taking, but they're coming in every day, preparing, distributing meals to the, to the city to make sure kids, kids and teens are fit. So with that, next page on the presentation, John. So sites offer meal pickup. The up, we are currently offering grab and go meals, lunch and breakfast for the next day at six of the seven schools, six of the eight schools, excuse me. Crocker McKay, Long Show, South Street, Memorial and Rheingold. And we have the listed bus stops there as well. First Student provides a bus to, to the different schools. We load them up with meals and then they head to those, those listed community neighborhood bus stops at the times noted to distribute meals as well. At those, the bus stops, they are, folks are able to get lunch for that day and pick up breakfast for the next morning. On Fridays, folks are allowed to pick up breakfast and lunch for the weekend as well when they pick up their Friday meals. Next slide. We just finalized this this morning. We are adding, I believe that's eight additional bus stops, which will bring our total meal sites or distribution sites up to 21 sites. This is starting Wednesday. Again, we just finalized it this morning. So those sites listed, Salem Street and Granite Street, Sheridan Street and Market Street, Arlington Street and Bond Street, Pratt and Chester, River Street, Sheldon Street, Butell, Jackson Street, Klondike Street, Gerard Street and Winter Street and Lawrence Street. At those times listed, starting Wednesday, will be additional meal pickup sites. Again, lunch for that day, breakfast for the next morning. Fine. So how are meals picked up? A lot of folks have, have been asking. We've been trying to get word out, but you know, at the school sites, the six school sites were set up right at the main entrance, just outside the main, so not coming into the building, at, at five of the sites. You know, with the parking lots and driveways, it's super simple for folks to drive up. We have distancing rules and markers in place. Folks get out of their car, come up to a table where we're, we provide meals for anyone 18 or under. Long Joe Street, just because of the nature of the building, we are distributing the meals from just inside the door on the Academy Street side. Just for safety reasons, there's no, there's no real good spot at that school to set up outside just from cars zipping by. So we're set up at that school just inside the door. Folks, we actually have it blocked off at the top of the stairs so folks can't come any further into the building. Folks come in, get a meal and then they're asked to, for distancing reasons, leave immediately. Bus stops, bus pulls into a school, we load them up with meals and then they head to that, to their designated sites and we're serving meals right out of coolers off of the buses for folks who want to pick up lunch for that day and breakfast for the next morning. So meal options, again, we are providing breakfast and lunch each day for anyone 18 or under. Lunch, we're doing a few different options, choice of a sandwich and entree salad, like a buffalo chicken or chicken Caesar salad. Also offering a yogurt meal option, yogurt, string cheese, things like that. All the meals come with fruits and vegetables and milk. Breakfast, we're offering either cereal or breakfast pastry, similar to what you'd see in the school during the, the school year. And those either, those come with milk and either option of fruit or juice. So just some basic information, the way we're able to do this, we were granted, we applied for and we're granted a waiver by USDA. We're essentially operating under modified summer program rules. So the, the meal service we are providing, we're, we're following the guidance of our summer food service program with a few little changes to that. In our normal circumstances, summer food service meals need to be consumed on-site and the children or child 18 and under has to come be there to pick it up. They changed those rules a bit because of the, the crisis that we're in. But you know, as far as meal pickup, they're available to anyone 18 or under at no cost. Meals can be picked up at any one of the sites. It does not need to be the school your child attends. Meals can be picked up at any bus stop, even if it is not your child's regular bus stop or if you, they don't normally ride a bus. These are our community sites set up where anyone 18 or under can come and get a free meal for pickup. And again, we're able to do this at no cost for anyone 18 or under based on the waiver we received from USDA. A little note about that, anyone enrolled in Pittsburgh schools who is over 18 years old is also eligible to receive a meal. There was some confusion on that when this first started. Like Superintendent Jokola said, we're, we're, we're building the plane while we're flying it and we finally received some guidance. Enrolled students that are 19, 20, 21 years old are eligible for a free meal as well. Next slide. Community help, we've had a lot of, of great, been contacted by tons of folks asking how they can help. And really what we need most help with, for anyone seeing this that, that may want to help, is identifying those households that might have a hardship or not really have the ability to get to our feeding sites when we are providing the meals. So what we're telling everyone that asks how they can, can help, if you know of someone, a household, your neighbor, a family member that doesn't live in your house or, or a friend or whatnot, you can pick up meals for them. You can head to one of the sites, let them know you're picking up however many meals for anyone 18 or under, one of our staff members or bus driver will provide you with those meals and you can take them to those households. There are no restrictions on, on having the child have to be there with you or anything like that. And it doesn't have to be the parents picking up the meals. Again, community support is really key with this. If, if anyone has a friend, a neighbor, a family member that is unable to, to get to meals, you're welcome to, to, we're encouraging folks to, to, you know, head to sites, pick up those meals and, and take them to, to those households that, that are unable to, to make it to the sites for, for whatever reason. Just some social distancing and public, public safety measures. We are taking this very seriously from a safety standpoint. Meals are being served as safely as possible from a food safety standpoint. We have very strict guidelines that we follow under normal circumstance and those are still being followed. Kitchen and service areas are cleaned and disinfected regularly. We are practicing proper social distancing amongst our service staff. You know, keeping our staff in separate kitchens so we only have three or four people working in a kitchen at a time. So we don't have, you know, 15 people in one kitchen sort of on top of each other. That was a conscious decision to have multiple sites to ensure we can have our staff distance and, and work as safely as possible. And we also have our services set up as well to ensure that the public maintains proper distancing rules. That's the reason for, we have a table set up. It encourages a distance between our staff as well as folks coming up to get the meal. We have cones set up sort of as visual markers for folks to distance themselves if there, if there happens to be a line to pick up meals. You know, all these steps are being taken to ensure this is being done as safely as possible. So, so far, we have handed out over thirty-six thousand meals as of today since the start, since our, our first day of, of being closed back in, in mid-March. So it, I'm thrilled to see that the public is taking advantage of this program. Again, we were granted a special waiver by USDA to do it and, and it's obvious by the numbers there's a need and we will continue this program as long as this crisis stays in effect. And that could, that would include when, when the school year were to end. If this were to go longer, you know, we're keeping an eye on all that. You know, this would continue, just transition into a summer, should that happen. So these meals will be available for as long as the schools are closed due to this crisis. And then come summertime, if there are still concerns over distancing and safety and we cannot get back to sort of our normal summer program and in our parks and park and rec programs, we would continue a similar model just like this one. So we encourage all folks, please follow the Pittsburgh School's social media platform. That's where I'm in, in touch with Chad Gardner, Chad Gardner frequently to make sure, you know, site times and serving sites are updated. There'll be an announcement going out tomorrow with the update on those new bus stop sites. But this is the, the district, the Pittsburgh Schools website as well as the social media sites are the best place to get the most current information on, on meal sites, times and, and pick up information. And I believe that is it.
Thank you, Dave. Do any school committee members have any questions of Dave before moving on?
I have one. For all these distribution centers at all the schools and the bus stops, is it mostly run by nutritional staff or nutrition staff? Or is it, any volunteers are helping currently with the distribution? So a combination of, of, of both and that, and the bus company as well. The meals are being prepared by nutrition staff, staff members exclusively. And we have, we, we do have a folks to do that. Serving the meals at the sites, at the school sites, again, is being done by the nutrition services staff. We have had help with principals and, and folks throughout, you know, when they're able to help, which is great. The bus company is providing bus drivers, they're distributing the meals at the bus stops. As far as volunteers and whatnot, at the sites themselves, we are, we do have that covered. We do know of some pockets of folks here and there that are picking up meals for, you know, friends or neighbors and, and dropping them off at households. It's something that we're encouraging folks to do. And that, that, those are, that's the most, the best opportunity for volunteering we could ask for right now is identifying, if you have friends, family, neighbors that, that, that could benefit from this but have a hardship and cannot get to the site, pick up the meals, your folks are welcome to pick up meals. Let the staff know how many meals you're picking up for kids and we'll provide you with however many you need and they can drop them off.
Okay, great. Dave, Dave, in, in regards to that, do you know in advance how many cases you have like that, people that are in that kind of a situation? Any idea knowing? Where, where it's, I'm asking, the, the sheriff contacted me this weekend. He's got deputy sheriffs that are looking to help out, to, to contribute. I don't know. I mean, is that something we can, I can talk to the sheriff about? Say, look, if you've got, I can get a half a dozen guys or, or gals, whatever, and to go deliver these meals, you know what I mean? If we knew, if we knew in advance, you know?
Well, that, that's, the challenge is identifying.
Right.
Is identifying the households that truly need it. So that, that's what we're looking at, so.
And let me tell you, I want to say something about Sedexo. I don't know, I, you know, we've never been in this situation, obviously. We're all kind of learning as we go, but you guys really jumped into it. I mean, thirty-six thousand meals. That's pretty impressive. Congratulations.
I, I appreciate that and, and you know, all the credit goes to the staff. I couldn't do.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. You know, but it's, the way I look at it is, you know, I'm, I'm part of the community. You know, I know, I work for Sedexo, we provide the nutrition services for the district. But you know, I live locally, I've, I've been in Pittsburgh for fifteen plus years. You know, in the community. So this, it's more than Sedexo to me, it's more than Pittsburgh, it's what, what the community needs, so.
We thank you, yeah. And Bob, Bob, your staff, you know, as usual. You know, I always say this about myself, you're only as good as who you've got working with you. And you know, they make, they make us successful and they make the community successful. So no one collaborates and partners better than the people in Pittsburgh, so.
Absolutely true. Yeah. Whether, whether it's ice storms or pandemics, Sedexo is always there, so.
Right, yeah, thank you.
Dave, can I just ask a question?
Of course.
Are you confident with the supply line for food?
Yes, confidence with the supply line is high. It's not just Pittsburgh schools, of several, many other districts nationwide are doing the same thing. And with one of the, the positives of, of having Sedexo is we have strong purchasing power. So we're able to, you know, it's, it's a matter of identifying projected need and forecasting so we can work with our suppliers to ensure there's no interruption. You know, we, we, like I said, we were doing three options for lunch, two options for breakfast. We did that on purpose just in case, maybe one day we're running short on one thing. At least we have a couple of different things to provide. But at this time, I don't anticipate needs. We're, we're using food products that we would normally use during this school year, so. So it, it's, it's things that we were going to be getting anyway, they were already forecasted for, so.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions? Bob, continue, I suppose, right?
Okay, yeah, at this point, we'll turn it over to Adam Renda to give a summary of the survey results that we completed.
Good evening, everyone. So we, we created a survey literally the, the day after Superintendent Jokala had decided to, to call off school for a week. And of course, we know that, that coming Monday, that the state stepped in and, and closed us until April seventh and now May fourth. So we were ready to go to collect the information needed so that we could provide families of what they need. So as Bob mentioned before, almost seventeen hundred responses. I know at least as far as my time giving surveys in Fitchburg Public Schools, I've never had any type of response like this. And the whole reason we wanted to do this is, is we wanted to continue with what our mission is, which is, you know, equity for all students, access for all students and supporting families as best we could. So we had a pretty good, next slide, we had a pretty good representation of all schools. Pretty much the lowest was nine percent, but really all schools had a, had a good representation of well over a hundred families in each school. Next slide, John. So the overwhelming response of the two major needs were a Wi-Fi device and unfortunately food. You know, internet access only came in at fifteen point nine percent. But for, for the people who responded, you know, almost forty percent needing the device to do some of the remote learning. And the food insecurity, as we know, is, is pretty high in Fitchburg, but Sedexo has assisted with that big time. And, you know, I gotta tell you, I'm not at all surprised with Sedexo's response, having gone through the Crocker closure two years ago now, it seems like a lifetime ago. You know, they had us up and running in two remote locations, you know, it's like without, without any hiccups. So this is obviously a much larger scale, but not surprised one bit. So as you know, Sedexo is serving over two thousand meals a day to Fitchburg families and thirty-six thousand meals to date. There are six schools where people can get food and over sixteen bus stops as of Wednesday will be utilized to dispense food. Mrs. Semenza in the Food Service established a plan immediately and distributed food to students as soon as schools were closed. We're suspecting that these numbers may continue to rise, their response was nothing short of remarkable. Also, we have to talk about our, our Technology Director, Eileen Spinney. And our principals are identifying students who need a Wi-Fi device. And as of Tuesday, you know, with no small effort on Eileen and, and her department, Technology Department, we will have distributed somewhere between twelve hundred and fifteen hundred Chromebooks so that remote learning can happen. We had a remote learning website established to provide enrichment within the first week. In less than ten days, all staff was trained in Google Classroom and that our utilizing Google Classroom to engage students and work towards the new guidelines. Administration, school counselors, teachers have contacted over ninety percent of all families. Immediately, we knew one of the most important things that we needed to do is get in touch with families and make sure everyone was doing okay. And, you know, we're, we're still struggling with a small percentage of people who may not have active phones or internet access, so they can't check their email. But, you know, there's a plan for that and teachers, mental health workers and admin are at that every day. So we're in constant contact, we're trying to provide social emotional support for families through phone calls, connect ad, emails, social media surveys. And we're getting to the point where if those, those few remaining families who we're having trouble getting in touch with, we will start doing some wellness checks and I believe we're going to try to utilize school resource officers to help us do that. You know, Fitchburg Public Schools has completely redesigned what education looks like in Fitchburg. And we will continue to refine this model as long as the schools are closed. So as part of that survey, we actually had some, some really nice comments from, from families who really appreciate what we're doing. So I just picked three, three to share with you. The first is, we do appreciate everything that FPS has been doing to ensure that the majority of families are up to, up to date, providing as much resources as possible. I find this comforting that you have someone on the Long Joe staff that is this caring and supportive for her students as we go through these uncharted waters together. And the last was, teachers have been in constant communication and providing exceptional support. So you know that, that middle comment is about a Long Joe teacher, but those other two were from different schools. So it's, you know, the, the, the teachers are really stepping up and, you know, probably working longer than, than the three to four hours a day to get things done. That is everything for the, for the survey.
Any questions? Thank you, thank you, Adam, that was terrific, appreciate it. Bob?
At this point, we'll transition over to John Thompson, Assistant Superintendent, to give an update on the remote learning and student expectations.
Good evening, everyone, can everyone hear me?
Yes, I can.
All right, great, all right. So this is, I wanted to give everyone an update on where we are at for remote learning as a district. It's going to be a brief update, I want to discuss the enrichment in remote learning opportunities that we've been providing students for the last three weeks. So this all began actually back March eleventh, the Friday before we announced the closure. We gathered the instructional coaches together to begin identifying resources and gathering those resources. We felt that something was going to happen and we wanted to be proactive. So we started planning for this a few days before it was announced. And I just want to thank all the instructional coaches in addition to the teachers for the support that they've given us and provided us with developing these enrichment opportunities. So that worked in that Wednesday, March eleventh. Then beginning on Friday, March thirteenth to Friday, March twentieth, we began handing out enrichment, enrichment packet worksheets to students during the few food distribution times in the district. In addition, Eileen Spinney and her tech department during that week created the e-learning site that can be found at our homepage. This site contains a variety of activities, suggested websites and apps students can explore to continue learning. During week two of the closure from March twenty-third to the twenty-seventh, all teachers participated in a Google Classroom training and began creating a Google Classroom for their students. Then on week three, from March thirtieth to April third, last week, teachers began to launch their Google Classrooms by posting remote learning activities for students. And then this week, beginning on Monday today, we started with student, student learning expectations, expectations that I'll talk a little bit about in the next few slides. So that's kind of a brief history about where we've been in the last few weeks. I just want to thank all the staff, teachers, paraprofessionals, all Fitchburg Public Schools employees for reinventing the wheel on learning for our students. It's excellent work. Oh, and then back here, I just wanted to show you, this is an example of our remote learning website. This is just the top, but daily, you, the kids can find different activities here that are happening, they can click on the links. On the left here, we have a parent resource guide to how to use Google Classroom. We're actually in the process of uploading the Spanish version for parents, so please stay tuned. And in addition, over here, we have, on the right, we have some live zoo streams. In addition, on the bottom to this site, there's different grade levels too, that there's information available. So we began last week distributing Chromebooks and I just want to thank Eileen Spinney and her staff. Dina, Chris, Eva Kelly, also Patrick, they've done a wonderful job with the Chromebook distribution. Tomorrow will be our last official day of Chromebook distribution from nine to three. Long Joe Middle School and Crocker Elementary School can come to South Street Elementary to pick up a Chromebook. Any other student who needs a Chromebook also can come tomorrow, we'll be able to provide Chromebooks for you at that time. So during this time, from beginning today, April sixth to Monday, May fourth, content assignment completion counts. So these are expectations for our students now, starting today from April sixth to Monday, May fourth. So students' expectations, they will access academic content by their teachers in Google Classroom. They'll log in daily to Google Classroom to review the remote learning expectations that day. Students and parents will check their emails daily. Students are expected to engage into, in remote learning activities for at least three hours a day. And one thing I want to say on the remote learning activities, these activities may not all be online. Students may have to do a research project, they may have to go outside and explore outside to find certain items. It, it may not all be online activities, so please make sure you check your child's Google Classroom for those assignments. In addition, students will complete work that will reinforce skills already taught this school year by applying and deepening these skills. So students won't be learning, you know, some teachers won't be continuing along with the curriculum. They'll be going back and reinforcing school, us, those skills that were already taught in the previous part of the school year. Also, teachers during this time, teachers will provide student, students with feedback on work completed. In addition, they'll also track students' participation and the amount of work they are complete, have completed during this time. So again, this starts today, Monday, April sixth, and will end Monday, April fourth. One note I wanted to make, we do understand that not all students have a Chromebook at this time. We know that there is distribution tomorrow. So as soon as students do have a Chromebook, we ask them to log on immediately to the Google Classrooms. So there's been some questions around report cards and I just wanted to clarify what's been, what's going to be happening currently for report cards. So Crocker, Rhongold, South Street, McKay and Goodrich are on trimesters. All trimester two report cards already went home on Friday, March thirteenth, the last day we were in session. So all families should have report cards now for trimester two for Crocker, Rhongold, South Street, McKay and Goodrich. The other remaining schools, Long Joe Memorial and Fitchburg High, they are all on quarters. So for quarter three, grades will be calculated using assignments completed by Friday, March thirteenth. Any assignment that was due between March fourteenth to April third will be accepted as extra credit towards quarter three grades. Grades for quarter three close on mark on Friday, April third, but teachers can accept work up to Sunday, April twelfth. We want to make sure students please check with their teacher on when they will be accepting work too. Also, students should contact their teachers regarding any extra credit assignments. And students and parents are encouraged to contact their teachers if they have any questions about quarter three assignments and grades. And then finally, report cards will be available in Aspen X two for students and parents to view, to view by Friday, April seventeenth. So the question that we've been asked by a lot of people is what's going to happen for the end of the year report cards or grading for trimester three and then quarter four? At this time, the district doesn't have an answer, we are waiting for more guidance by the Department of Elementary, Elementary and Secondary Education. As soon as we have the guidance, we'll be coming out to update the community on what will be happening with end of the year grades. And that's all for me, questions?
Okay, John, thanks for that update. And Craig Shalfo, our Director of Finance and Operations, will provide a update on the building needs and resources.
Thanks, Bob, just a, a quick update about our buildings at this point. We currently have all of our buildings staffed, we have a single custodian that is in the building from seven until three during the day, mostly to help to keep the, the areas safe for our food service providers who are in the buildings and maintaining a watch on the, on the buildings themselves. We will be continuing to run these skeleton crews until further notice. We do have our contractors and we've had a, a few projects that have been ongoing in the individual schools. So our contractors are continuing to work on projects that were already underway. And for our buildings on the weekends, we are continuing with our weekend walkers just to maintain supervision across the, the different buildings throughout the district. Excellent, John, thank you. And just in relation to how we're manning our, staffing our buildings at this point, we have noticed from the Department of Labor Standards at the end of last week, pretty much spelt out the guidelines of what we should be doing in our K-12 schools throughout the Commonwealth. And it's pretty much in line with what we're doing now, making sure that the buildings are up and running and that we're keeping an eye on them. This is not a time for us to have our staff in the buildings to be doing any type of moving, extensive cleaning. And they're really looking at anything that's necessary outside of the buildings would just be those areas that need to be maintained. If we do have sports that come back after May and to prep the buildings for the potential for openings. But this time, our buildings are being run on just a skeleton crew. On the MSBA front, we've got a couple of updates. We've got two major projects with the MSBA. We have our South Street Elementary School, which is an accelerated repair project. The funding has been approved both at the municipal level and the state level. Our construction bid documents have been posted publicly, we're actually waiting to get some of our preliminary results back, I believe, this week. And the, the plan is to replace the South Street roof and boilers starting this summer. Just before we kind of went into this crisis mode, we were able to finalize our enrollment certifications through MSBA for the Crocker Core Project. And I have noted here a few scenarios that were put into the MSBA for their opinion. So what we have looked at is different enrollments depending whether we are, the Crocker Core Projects is a K to four with seven hundred and thirty-five students and neither do the approved numbers, or a one to five with PKK Center at either McKay or at South Street. We will be waiting for the direction, the Board of Directors will be voting on April fifteenth to find out as we move forward into the feasibility, back into the pipeline for this Crocker Core Project. Just real quick again, on the finance front, all of our school personnel working remotely when applicable. Obviously, our food service folks have been very busy. All with maintaining all employees on the payroll and we're continuing to finalize and, and fine tune our remote learning opportunities for all of our students throughout the district. And again, just a quick shout out, at this time, at, at the time of April first, we'd served about twenty-five thousand meals. So Dave and his team and Don are with First Student have been doing an outstanding job, I just wanted to thank them as everyone else has. One thing that we will be looking at, obviously our buses are not running at this time. So we'll be looking at the bus contract as we proceed through either our current shutdown or, or lengthier shutdown. And looking on, at the, at our budget, at this point at least, the FY twenty, Chapter seventy budget remains stable. Obviously, this has been a, a moving target. Back in January, the governor's recommended FY twenty-one, Chapter seventy budget was at sixty point six million. That was about a seven percent increase and lots of talk about the Student Opportunity Act. Obviously, with the current crisis that we're in, all budgets are under review. We're getting information from the state about the Federal Cares Act and how that $2.2 trillion package will roll out to the different states and the municipalities. So lots of information still to come pertaining to our budget. And then the Student Opportunity Act, there was an April 1st deadline that has been extended. So in general, we'll be looking at our FY 21 budget, you know, looking at it in very many different ways and presenting what a level funding situation might look like, looking at what the Student Opportunity Act and what that would be. And then lots of scenarios in between. So there's lots of information that we're still waiting to hear from the state as this plays out. And like I said, there's more information that comes out every single day. So there'll be much more to follow on that. I did include a slide here, just, this was the preliminary budget in January that the governor put forth. At this point, the, you know, the budget process is pretty much frozen. There was a round table tomorrow where there may be additional information. But there's lots of questions as everyone deals with this, this crisis and focusing on the health is first priority. So I'm sure that more information will be coming out to us soon. And we'll, as it does, we'll have more information to share with the public.
Hey Craig, thanks. Any school committee members have questions for Craig in regards to the facilities update or the budget update? Have no questions. I'll just have Jeremy bring us to closure with an update on our career initiative readiness initiatives up at Fitchburg High School.
Great. Just everybody and hope everybody's healthy and well and needs any, so you know, over of the skills grant that Fitchburg High applied for in the fall. And we were really excited about the opportunity to build an advanced manufacturing program at Fitchburg High. And one of the ways to support that, you know, because you need specific equipment to really make it, make it viable, is to pursue these skills capital grants that fall under Governor Baker's guidance, I suppose, or authority. So we, we did apply for a grant in the fall. Quiet. Well, did I get bounced out or am I still on?
You're still on.
Okay, great. So, so again, really excited. We had to just, like, as I said, wait until, you know, about January, February to notify the community about that. So what are they? They're, they are grants that, that are provided through the Workforce Skills Cabinet, which was created by Governor Baker a few years back. They're really designed to help schools or other training programs purchase really expensive equipment for vocational, technical types of learning experiences or credential programs or bachelor's or associate degree programs or whatever it might be.
I'm sorry, Jeremy, Mr. Roche, can you please screen share?
Oh, yeah, I had, and I'll come back to it and do it again. Is that better?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. So, so thank you for, for helping me out there. So again, the, the types of grants that we pursued were probably more typical to vocational high schools, technical high schools, or even adult training centers, or even community colleges. So it was new to us, but, you know, we were really excited. We got a lot of help along the way. And again, when we received that grant, we were, we were excited because we know it's going to help the community. You know, moving forward, it has to follow certain criteria. And I think we met every single one and did pretty well in the process. So we have to connect to the, to the labor market for Fitchburg and the immediate area. And, you know, you use certain tools like the blueprint, the, the regional blueprint that the Chamber of Commerce produces. You know, we have to connect with industry partners in manufacturing. And I'm excited to be able to share that, you know, we've not only connected with some partners, but they've become very active with us and have been meeting at Fitchburg High School for the better part of this school year to offer us advice and guidance. And, I mean, we have to work with higher ed, you know. And, and so the Mount, Mount Wachusett Community College, Dr. Henshaw and his team have been awesome partners for us and have helped give us a lot of support and guidance because they're really connected with sort of workforce development in the region. And we have to have a pathway of course, which I'll snap that. And again, connect with, with community colleges or other types of programs. So we're, we're going to be able to offer industry credentials, which I'll explain a little bit, in college credits. So, you know, I think our kids are going to be in great shape with what, with what they'll be able to do. You know, to pursue one, you have to be able to, to demonstrate that there is a need in one of the five high demand industries. So for North Central Mass, you know, healthcare and manufacturing are the two, two of the top three job sectors in our immediate region. So, so it was pretty straightforward following up with advanced manufacturing because it's actually the number two job sector in the Fitchburg, Lemonster, Gardner, you know, North Central Mass region. And, you know, some, some, some specific information will follow about kind of how, how big an opportunity this is for our kids and really adults in the community, especially as we look to night. Our pathway at Fitchburg High, you know, the manufacturing pathways is going to connect kids to jobs. You know, the top three sectors in North Central Mass, healthcare, manufacturing and municipal type jobs. Within manufacturing, there are lots of different opportunities. And there's a huge shortage looming. So, you know, there's a significant need for, for folks to jump into the, to this type of sector. And, you know, we want to make sure that we're able to address that. And, and, you know, some specific information that, that we use that, that again, the, the state was, was happy to see because for our region, we have therapy, what, what needs and also, you know, what they need. And I think this is really going to be able to do that because the manufacturing sector is going to be losing a lot of employees. And up until probably March 13th was really growing in the region, and it will bounce back, you know, that's for sure. So we have worked very hard to, to build partnerships in the immediate area so that we got suggestions and advice from folks in the, in the, in the actual industries, but also to be able to develop internships and job opportunities for our kids. So you can see four of the manufacturers that we've worked very closely with, you know, three or four right here in Fitchburg and Moonland Wire, right over there in Lemonster. And they've been nothing short of awesome in terms of helping us with recommendations coming out to Fitchburg. Being a part of the Manufacturing Committee. In addition to those four companies, Boutwell Owens, Grif, Moonland Wire, Rochelle, O'Toone Die. You know, we've also had a lot of support from MWCC, you know, as, as noted, Dr. Henshaw and his team, and also the North Central Mass Workforce Investment Board with Kelly French and Anthony Wilson. And again, I mean, they've been meeting with us monthly at Fitchburg High and really helping us build what we think is going to be a great program. I mean, ultimately, it's going to help our kids, it's going to help the community. You know, the courses are going to offer specific credentials, namely the Mackwick credential, which is recognized in Massachusetts in, in manufacturing centers, levels one and two at minimum, and we want to offer level three, which, which is really a separator for candidates as they, as they go and pursue internships or jobs. You know, we'll have state of the art equipment and, and great lab space. Greg Shalfo's and Tom Peterson have been pretty involved with the space, you know, designs and how that's going to look and what kind of renovations we're going to need to. It's pretty minimal, but it's really going to be, I think, you know, excellent when it's, when it's completed. You know, our kids will be doing hundred hour internships and job opportunities should come from that. You know, in fact, right before the, the break, you know, the, the closure, I should say. You know, eight of our seniors are going to go over to Moonland Wire for interviews in person. And, you know, we're going to try to get that going again when we can. But that's what I mean by these companies are right on board with. They look, they're looking to hire, you know, kids right out of the internships. And, you know, I think it's going to also hopefully change sort of some of the perception about manufacturing. You know, sometimes there's a sense of it as not a desirable stable, there's, it's a career as opposed to a job. And, you know, the average salary is really can move very quickly for individuals up into the 50, 60, $70,000 a year range, including overtime, health, fringe benefits, you know, that type of thing. That again, market is a career versus just a day to day type of job. And, you know, we think ultimately as we, as we built this, that, you know, as we, as we look at our kids, you know, we want them to stay in Fitchburg. We want them to be in the area and support the local economy, invest in the community, buy a home here. You know, have kids get married, all that stuff, and have, have that cycle continue with, with additional people to come through and just make our community stronger and better. You know, what we'll be purging specifically in the slide, we're looking at very high tech and, and industry recognized devices. There will be kids hands on, it's the type of devices that they will use in places like Boutwell Owens, in places like Rochelle, O'Toone Die, and, and these other companies that we've been working with. And we will expand. So you can see some images of the exact items from the injection mold unit there, which is sort of one right to the bottom left, I think, on your screen as I'm looking at it. I don't know. You know, laser printers and laser cutters, precision measurement type, type of kits, like the one that you see in the bottom right. You know, you see a number of the other devices here, like the CNC machine up in the top middle. You know, it's impressive. I mean, we're, we're pretty excited about it. Hopefully, I'm still presenting. I don't know. I believe there was oh, okay. I'm having, I'm having a shaky internet experience, I believe.
Yeah, we're just seeing you.
There's only maybe one more. That's enough. That's enough to probably hurt the ratings, I would think. Trying last, okay. So coursework is pretty, is obviously essential. So, you know, we've had a great team working on this from Tonya Jarrett, Don Marshall, Todd Shack, John Powett, you know, a, a number of guidance counselors, other folks within our staff who've, who've really done a lot of the legwork and putting together a four year pathway. And, you know, we're excited about it because it's, it's really, again, connected to recommendations we receive from, from the folks we've been getting advised by from the mount and, and industry. So right on the Fitchburg Public Schools High School website, we have the application. We're looking to get kids involved right away next year. This is up and running. We already have some of the courses running, but it's full speed ahead for next year. So the applications are there, the links are there. And if anybody has questions, they can always, always reach out to me and, and also Tonya Jarrett. And, and, you know, final point is, you know, we are pursuing another skills capital grant that's due April 30th. So we hope to get, to get that one too. So again, this is going to be great for, for the, for the school, for the kids, for the, and for the community, we believe.
Could I ask a question, Jeremy? How do students complete the, sorry? How do students complete the hundred hours? Will they have different schedules like in the tech schools, they have on weeks, off weeks, right? So how will that work for, for people in the program?
Yeah, so we'll have a little bit of flexibility, but what we're looking to do would, would be third and fourth quarter senior year. Because some, because with the manufacturers, most of them are 18 plus employer, employers. So they, they don't really hire minors just by nature of the, the type of jobs that are going on there in terms of, they're very safe environments, but, but they are, you know, career based type, type places where, where they have a serious, you know, process that's happening, whether it's Rochelle, O'Griff or whatever. So the kids have to be in a position to be able to do that, first of all. So they got to be 18 years old. So we're looking at third and fourth quarter release time using the mass work-based learning plans. And we are also discussing our, our master schedule as well. So we're looking at the ability to fix periods for kids so that, so that they're able to ma- maintain, you know, some of what they're doing now and also do that, and also do the internship. There is an option for
They get them done in the school day then?
Absolutely, yes. So, so there is an option that, that is available too for a capstone project. So there may be some kids very interested in, in the manufacturing program who do the full six credits, but they're baseball players, you know, and, and, and are softball players or, or spring track or something. So they're very tied to the school during that second semester. So what we would do for them is a capstone type of project experience. And that's, that's approved as well by the state as one way to be able to do the, to do the internship in lieu of the hundred hours. But the hundred hours is beneficial because, you know, the four manufacturers we've been working with, they intend to hire their kid, you know, they intend, tend to hire the student, I should say, you know, who has had successful intern experience. They need this be an experience where we're building from within and helping make those connections for our kids, but also for, for the partners that we have that, you know, are looking for good, strong, solid employees that they can bring in, train, build and develop, and hopefully, you know, have as a, as a valuable employee within their organizations for many years to come. And, and as I said, the big picture of, you know, helping the community as well.
Great.
Any, any other questions?
Congratulations, long overdue. You know, I always talk about Monty Tech, Mount Wachusett, Fitchburg State. Now we can talk about Fitchburg High as being part of that, that link between our community. We've always been a community that makes things. That manufacturing piece is, is huge. And yes, well, you know, we, we were now, this is going to include us as a player. And I think that's important. Thank you.
And I guess I'll just, and Jeremy, correct me if I'm wrong here, but I think a little less than a third of our graduating class of last, was it last year, went into the career field. And because they want to go into the career fields versus going to college. And this is a great opportunity where they can pick up some credentials. And fortunately, we have companies in the area who are, are looking for hardworking, qualified staff. So we can be a really good connector of our students to, to those employers.
Folks, in my former life, I, I do a manufacturing company, a medium sized company in Fitchburg. And this is about, I want to say five or six years ago. And his, his biggest need, his chief need, I thought it was going to be energy issues, healthcare. It was, it was how does he keep, you know, an educated workforce? That was his biggest challenge, that what he was looking at in the future, in the next five years. And that's what he told me, always impressed me. And so this kind of addresses that, you know?
Right. Yeah, that's the aim for sure. And, and like Superintendent Jokula said, you know, many of our kids, they want to work. And we want to help provide them with an opportunity at a career, as I said, as opposed to just a job, you know, and something that allows also, you know, a strong connection to the community. Like you said, Mary, you know, we want this to be tied into what the community needs, what our kids need. Because then it's, you know, it's the Fitchburg Public Schools performing that, that, that mission of, of really giving back to the community while we're, while we're supporting kids accessing what they need as they move forward. So, yeah, it's exciting. We're, we're really happy about it.
You know, one 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 more thing, and this this I used to have discussions with the now Lieutenant Governor when she was on the House floor, when when we served as reps together, the importance of involving the families. When you're talking about a kid going into a manufacturing job, some parents think, oh, my God. They're going to be working a factory, and it's a pejorative to them because they had the concept of thirty years ago.
Exactly.
And manufacturing is very, very different than it was thirty and fifty years ago. So you got to sell it to the parents as well that this is a career that you want your kids going into. I mean, it pays better than well, and it's a it's a lifetime career.
Yeah, and and part of the plan is to make it a program that's available to the community in the after hours. I mean, that's a big part of what we want to see happen as well so that so that parents might even take advantage of courses that would be available, that would be a credential type class. Because, you know, we want to we want to open these devices up and and make them, you know, a big part of of the entire system, you know, from kids right up through parents. So, yeah, I agree. Part of it is changing perception and yeah, changing the terms from factories to manufacturing centers, advanced manufacturing and and some of that and letting people see how clean these shops are. They're not they're not dirty, smokestacked places. They're very, it's it's almost like unbelievable how clean they are and and having toured a few of them. And and it's it is totally different from from what maybe we had experienced growing up or that perception of the old factory style. So, yeah, that might take some time, but I tell you, the kids are excited about it. The ones that have been taking the classes, they've done a lot of field trips to these sites. And they've come back with, yeah, this is great. I want to get after this. So so that's been working so far.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you.
So back to the agenda, we have a donation, grants and Pearson royalty. So first of all, I'd like to thank Rollstone Bank and Trust. They recently approached us to make a donation to help our families lead and and provide some relief during this crisis. So they'll be making a donation for some food assistance, which we will be working through the principles to provide that aid to the families. So thank you, Rollstone. Craig, do you want to talk about the the hydration grant?
We've looking to submit a grant. It actually is through the Department of Environmental Protection. It's for filtered hydration stations at all of the schools based on the the new lead requirement. So we'll be submitting that. I believe we've we've requested three or four per school.
Good.
Then we have three more grants that we're submitting, the Twenty First Century Enhanced Funds Grant, for twenty thousand, the Summer Eats Program, expansion for just under sixty three hundred. And the program that Jeremy was just talking about, the Mass Skills Capital Grant Program for two hundred fifty thousand. And lastly, several years ago, former ELL Director Bonnie Bear C. Mac worked on a project with Pearson. We entered a royalty agreement with them. We still continue to receive royalties from that. The latest check came in, little little under four hundred dollars. Need security, school committee approval to accept. And then lastly, we have a dead warrant for school committee to just sign off on. And there is no executive session recommended by me.
All right, great. You want to would the committee wish to bundle the action?
Only action item.
Twelve eighty four up through, including twelve eighty eight.
Go moved.
Second.
Motion made is second to the bundle, twelve eighty twelve eighty four up through, including twelve eighty eight. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, the janitors. No need for executive session. A motion to adjourn?
Into adjourn.
Second motion made and seconded. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second motion made and seconded adjourned. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Very good.